Yeah, I just spell out the format. As you know, each agency received a letter from me attesting to what would be the procedure. Basically, we'll meet tonight. If we can wrap it up, so be it. If we can't, we'll continue on Thursday at the same time, same place. Okay? I would hope that we would be understanding that this committee is here strictly to look at grant agencies and the funding, which will be forthcoming, we hope anyway. I would hope that you would adhere to the power. Okay? I'm going to be going agency by agency, line by line. I'll give the proposed amount. I'll give the proposed amount that the mayor had given. I will ask for any questions. Those people that are with it at the agency and you would like to speak, you certainly may. I wish and respectfully ask of you that you limit your discussion or your speaking to two to three minutes. I know it's not a lot of time, but ladies and gentlemen, there's 39 agencies that we I'm going to ask, in the beginning, I'm going to ask that our Assistant Director of Finance would maybe like to say a few things regarding the proposed budget for the agencies. Dan Garrick and the gentleman sitting right in front, would you like to say anything to the public regarding the financing or the budget?
What you see throughout this budget on the grant agencies is that the amount that's been budgeted for the current year, for the most part, has been carried over into the following, to next year's budget. So you'll see that throughout. I'm not sure if there's any areas you want to go into.
I think that we, you mentioned that we have some information in case we need backup documentation.
Yes, we have all of your applications here in case there's some questions that may arise during our discussions. So I'll have that with me here.
May I?
You may.
Could you just briefly go over the kind of vetting that goes on between your department and the agency before they get to the book?
Actually, I haven't been involved in that, but they submitted their requests, some documentation as to their audits, financial statements from prior years. There's some information on there also as to the number of Danbury residents that have been served and how much is, in certain instances, how much funding comes from other communities.
Thank you very much.
That's what I wanted to know.
And if I might, one more statement that might interest some of us here. I have to admit, as I was going through the, I've never done this before with regard to the agencies, but as I was going through the list, I noticed that there, to me, it seemed like there might be some issues regarding duplication, mission statements that are pretty close. So taking the bull by the horns, I drafted a letter to the town clerk today attesting to that after the budget procedure, we will take a look at, we will take a look at mission statements. In many cases, they're the same. Duplication of major efforts and objectives, possible duplication of funding regarding grants, and better tracking of grants, including those mandated by state and federal law. I tried to find out which of those are mandated by state or federal law, and it was very difficult to do that. So I think that down the road, those that are concerned about what's going on with regard to keeping the agencies in check with regard to funding, I think that this might be the answer. I also advised that we hire a consultant regarding the issue because it's bigger than what myself, or I think, and others could handle. So I think it's something that we have to look for in the future. Okay? With that being said, I'd like to start with the first agency, Ability Beyond Disability. The proposed by the department was $34,000. The proposed, as given by the mayor, $26,317. Because of the letter that I had sent previously in the last two, three days, many of the agency leaders or supervisors contacted me by telephone or email stating that they were happy with the monies that are going to be given to them, and therefore, I so note. This particular one is one of the agencies that said, "We're quite happy with the money that we're going to get," and therefore, I give that information to you. Is there any, is there anybody in the audience first that would like to address the committee regarding Ability Beyond Disability, that particular agency? Are there any questions from anybody on the committee regarding this particular grant? Thank you very much. We'll move on. The next is AIDS Project of Greater Danbury, APGD. As proposed by the department for 27208, $14,626. As given by the mayor, proposal zero. And the reason for that is that AIDS Project of Greater Danbury will now be funded by Interfaith AIDS Ministry, and that, therefore, there was a duplication of monies and mission statements, et cetera, et cetera. So that's one of the issues that I picked up. So in terms of AIDS Project of Greater Danbury, it will now be funded by Interfaith AIDS. Is there anybody that would like to speak that? And would you be so kind when you come forward, would you please give us your name, where you live in Danbury, meaning that we are Danbury taxpayers, and that's a nice thing? Thank you very much.
Some of the directors may not be Danbury residents.
Oh, okay. Hi.
I'm Roberta Stewart. I'm the Executive Director of AIDS Project Greater Danbury. I no longer live in Danbury. I did move to Southbury because we started a farm, but I brought with me some compatriots here who do live in Danbury.
Very fine.
So, okay. I wanted to address you, and I appreciate the fact that we have the opportunity to do so. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
You're welcome.
I'm a little confused about the statement that you just made because frankly, I was coming into this feeling that we had requested $14,000 and the award was zero, that there was no consideration for the application, and your statement about us funding through Interfaith AIDS Ministry is confusing to me.
The information that, needless to say, when I looked at the application, I saw your proposal, and then I investigated why zero, zero amount of funding. When I went to the Director of Finance, okay, and at that time, she did say that this particular agency, your agency, will be in the future funded by Interfaith AIDS, so...
So might I understand that's going to pass through because frankly, we're the federal fiduciary for all the regions. We pass through to them.
As I understand it, it will be passed through the Interfaith AIDS. You will get your money through there.
We're going to get that amount.
You're going to get that money amount, as I understand.
I am very grateful. Thank you so much, but I just want to be sure that you guys are aware I brought you some information, that our missions are very, very different.
We understand. Again...
We do full services from HIV counseling and testing.
You do a commendable job too.
Well, I appreciate that, but we're the only ones who do counseling and testing, and we tested over 500 people this year, last year alone. We do housing, we do the mental health, we do the medical care, we do the case management, and we pass through the money for their food program.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And as far as I understand it, and I'm sure that I'm correct on this, and that was as per the Director of Finance, Dina Durorio. Okay?
All right. As far as your letter that went out, sir, I was not received of that, so I'm not sure if I'm going to be contacted about that information. I just want to make sure.
You most likely will be contacted.
Is this the letter?
No, this is...
That's for you guys, I think.
That's for... Okay. That was a letter that went out talking about the meeting and stuff.
Right. Yeah, we weren't contacted.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody? Any committee member have a question? No, thank you. Next, American Red Cross. $20,000 as proposed by the department, as proposed by the mayor, zero. Has not been funded in seven years. I don't know if that's a precedent or not, but I have to say to you, ladies and gentlemen, I received a notice just the other day from the American Red Cross. "We do not receive government funding for local programs or services. However, we have been able to support these and those in need, thanks to generous contribution from friends and neighbors like you." I, like many others, my family, we gift to the Red Cross through volunteering our funds, and I have a feeling that when the equation came up, that might have been part of the reason why it has not been funded for seven years. I'm not so sure that that is all correct, but is there anybody from the Red Cross that would like to speak, please? Please?
My name is Mike Malone. I'm Director of Development at the Red Cross, Western Connecticut Chapter of the American Red Cross.
Thank you.
And I just want to clarify a couple of things. We are not funded by the government. We don't get any government aid. The monies in which we receive are through the generosity of the American public. We run a Wheels program, which is what we were asking for support for, I believe, and it costs us about $70,000 a year. We have seven vehicles. We have 40 volunteer drivers. Cost of fuel, maintenance, and the vehicles is extremely expensive. We will not be able to continue this program, at least from the Danbury source, without some help and funding from the city. And that's just a reality. The Wheels program gives free rides for medical appointments to the underserved in the community. Last year, we took over 5,000 trips. We do this as a free service. We take people to the hospitals, we take them to medical appointments. We are a community service. We're, it's something that's important, and basically, all we're asking for is to part the fun, a little bit of a lift. People have a misunderstanding about the Red Cross. All the money that goes to places or designations like Katrina, Wilma, Rita, other disasters goes exactly there. We, on the local level, are in trouble. We just reorganized. We're down 40% in funding. This year, we're trying to recover. We just dropped our staff to 40%. The Wheels program is something that is important to the city of Danbury. It's important to the other Greater Danbury areas, and to me, it seems an error in judgment to not fund us in that respect. We've been struggling for some time. We have not been funded because we have not always made a proposal. Over the last seven years, we've only made a proposal maybe two times in that time. And so we're asking right now for your consideration of the Red Cross and the Wheels program. Again, as I'll say, all the money that we raise, we raise through the generosity of the American public. We do not get any other help for this. We go around and ask for our supporters. Danbury Hospital helps us, various other people help us with the Wheels program, but at this point, without this kind of support, it's going to be very difficult for us to continue.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
So is there any type of retort that we have?
Not sure, sir. At this time, are there any committee members that would like to respond or have any questions?
This is one that I noticed when I went through the book, too. I'd like us to consider some funding for this particular program, particularly if the cuts made elsewhere, but I'd like us to consider. This Wheels program, I read about this in the paper, of being discontinued, and I think it is a valuable service to the community. 4,700 people in Danbury alone are served by this program, so I think we ought to at least put it on as a consideration that we take it up for funding.
We will consider that. Thank you.
It says right here.
Oh, please. I'm sorry about that. That's a Chinese...
Yeah, we can't hear you if you don't come up. You want to be on TV. Are you going to let citizens speak?
Call the agency.
One of the things that I wanted to address the committee with is, over the last year since I've been on the council, one of my things that I've tried to look into heavily is senior transportation and the lack of senior transportation that's been happening throughout the city. I know the Housing Authority provides a van that's mainly for the, their clients they associate with in their housing, but there hasn't really been any type of organization citywide. And I read about the Wheels program, and I think this is a good opportunity for the city to address this need. The same need, again, was addressed last night at the public hearing. A couple of residents came out and spoke about the need for public transportation for seniors. It is a need, and I agree with Councilwoman Saraceno, that I hope you would consider putting something in the budget this year, because I'm more than willing to, the council as a whole, to recommend that we adopt some funding through the council. So I would hope that I wouldn't have to do that on my own, that you'll do it as a committee. It is a good program, and I hope you do serious consideration to request. It's only $20,000. It's not a lot of money compared to the 178 million, $190,000 budget. It's not even an percentage of the whole thing. There is money available to fund this, and I just hope that the committee takes that under consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ma'am, please.
Mary.
You make them up. Please, ma'am.
My name is Maureen Farrell. Could you come over to my microphone, please? My name is Maureen Farrell. I'm the Director of the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, but I wanted to speak to you tonight about the American Red Cross Wheels program and encourage you to support that program. I'm also a graduate student in public health, and so I work a lot with seniors, but I also study some of the issues that are going on throughout the country. In the state of Connecticut, medical transportation for seniors is in the top three priorities. At the federal level, it's such a concern, it's in the top 50 of their resolutions. When I go around speaking to seniors, I'm usually reporting volunteers, but I often have lots of discussions with seniors, and one of their biggest concerns is, you know, "What do I do when I can't drive anymore?" And there has to be mechanisms in place for seniors to stay mobile in their community, to participate in their community, to be able to go to the grocery store, to do, and medical appointments is a top priority. You know, seniors who don't have transportation see doctors less. They get less medical care, so there's a link between medical transportation and opportunities for seniors to get healthcare and access to healthcare. And one of the things about the Wheels program is that it's a gap service. The Sweetheart buses is also, will provide rides to the doctor, but there are some seniors who cannot use, it's just not a proper service for them, whether it be the stairs or other things. Although it's a wonderful service, the Sweetheart, what the Red Cross Wheels program is able to do is, they have car transport, so they're transporting the seniors in vehicles, and it provides, for some, a better route to the doctor for their service. So I really want you to consider supporting that. In the many seniors that I've spoken with in many different towns, it is an issue that comes up almost every time I meet with them. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Taggert, please.
Mr. Chairman, can the Assistant Finance Director clarify something?
Certainly.
I believe you stated that the AIDS Project of Greater Danbury was going to be funded in this budget, the $14,626 that they requested from the Interfaith AIDS budget, which is approved then or in the budget, has $26,265. Would the Assistant Director clarify whether or not that is true? I believe that's what you said, Ms. Farrell.
I did.
Yes. Would you clarify that?
I'm not aware of that. You've had a discussion with Dina?
Yeah, that was through, directed by its Dina. Is that something that we could look into?
Oh, I have, it's one of my...
What was the answer?
The answer is that we need to look at that. The Assistant Director is not aware of that, and...
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stanley, please.
Thank you. I was going to do with, Mr. Chairman, the first question.
Yes, you may. Thank you.
My question is, would the resident of Danbury residence...
We would provide, I don't have the information, you'll need to provide, to be honest.
Thank you. Then, please.
I live in Danbury. One of the things I requested last night was this ability to help us get transportation to and from things. You all know I've had surgery for the last year and a half. I have been at Main Street Rehab, and there is nothing sadder than to come up from a rehab session where you are exhausted after they've pushed and pulled and really hurt you, basically, to get you back on the road. And seniors are sitting there for two or three hours waiting for a ride to come home, waiting for someone from the family or some way to get home. You really do need to fund this. You also need to fund it because whether it's the American Red Cross and theirs, or another form of transportation for seniors, even if they're living in their homes, they need to be able to get out and get groceries in order to continue to live there. So there are specific things that they need to do. I know the Sweetheart bus is wonderful, but you have to make an appointment three weeks in advance. You don't always know you're going to be sick three weeks in advance. You need to be able to call somebody to get transportation. A lot of seniors, if they knew they had reliable transportation, wouldn't necessarily get behind the wheel of their own cars. I really would like to see you. I gave a whole batch of information to Mayor Bowden on this, about transportation and the needs that we have, and the American Red Cross, we found out, was unable to help us because of budget cuts and that sort of thing, so...
Thank you very much.
It's important for you to do that. Thank you.
If we could, we'll move on. The mayor cares. Proposed by the department, 207208, $25,000. Proposal by the mayor, $17,510. As of today, there's a balance of $4,000, and last year's actual expenditures were $17,510. Is there anybody from this particular agency that would like to address? Are there any questions from the committee? No, thank you. We'll move on. Amos House, proposed by the department, $16,950. As proposed by the mayor, $4,378. Actual in 205206 was $4,378. As of 11307, expenditures are $3,084. Please.
Mr. Riley and members of the council, good evening. I'm Joe Wachovitz, President of the Amos House Board of Directors, and with you is Wallace McFarland, both Danbury residents, and we're here to ask you to seriously take a look at increasing the mayor's budget amount of $4,278. We had requested $16,000 for this upcoming fiscal year, and we do so because Amos House is a small transitional living facility program here in the city of Danbury. We have a budget of about $270,000, $280,000. We have two large funding sources, United Way and the State of Connecticut Department of Social Services, which leaves us about $150,000 to $160,000 to raise within the community. And I know that you will hear time and time again here tonight the difficulties that nonprofits have of raising money through private sources. And why we are asking for this is that we have needs that need to be met, utilities like anyone else. The city in the past has been very generous in helping us with the CDVG grant, and with that money, and with other monies coming from the state of Connecticut, we will have almost a newly renovated facility. Our needs now are on our operating budget. So I'd ask you just to consider one thing. Quite admirably, the mayor and the members of the common council established a task force, and you created homelessness as a priority here in the city of Danbury. Quite admirably, the Bowden administration and the council are looking to end homelessness, I think, in a 10-year period. I ask you, does a $4,000 donation or subsidy to a facility like, a program like Amos House really meet the seriousness of that challenge? I don't think it does, and I would ask you to think about that as well, and I ask you to restore our funding to the $16,000 request level.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wachovitz. Is there any comments from any committee member? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on. CARRD, Association of Religious Communities, as proposed by the department, $7,125. As proposed by the mayor, $7,004. I received an email as of 3:20 today, and they were delighted with the proposal as offered by the mayor, so I have a feeling that that might be good. Is there anybody that would like to speak to that agency? Any questions from committee members? No, thank you. We'll move on. CARRD, proposed $8,755 by the department, as proposed by the mayor, $8,755. The expenditures as of 13107 are zero. Is there someone? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Pam Simaha. I'm the Executive Director of CARRD. I know I'm receiving the amount that I had asked for...
Yes.
But I thought it was important to let everyone know where we are financially. Even though we only receive $8,755 from the city of Danbury, I raise a lot of money throughout the year, and in the past three years, I have given approximately $30,000 to Danbury residents. Our kids have disabilities, they have ADHD, learning disabilities, emotional problems, behavioral problems. For nine years, we run an intensive therapeutic program. From the successes that are reported to us by teachers and parents and community members, we're expanding into a full-year program to give more intensive services year-round, including a therapeutic mentoring program, and also to serve more children. So I just... And last year, we were not in the budget, unfortunately, which put us in a situation financially where we're in debt for the amount that we didn't receive. Going to have to fundraise it to take care of that. So I just wanted you to know, I'm very grateful for the money that we do get, but with the services we provide, it's a very, very important service. And if these children did not have this program, these are the kids that would end up perhaps using drugs, being in the judicial system, dropping out of school, or getting into a lot of other serious acting out behaviors. So if there's anything you can do...
We'll take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on. Community Action Committee... Oh, excuse me, Councilwoman Diggs, please.
I want to ask a question regarding the current condition. Do you typically serve 50 each year? And these are all Danbury students? I would say 75% to 80% are Danbury children.
Thank you. Community Action Committee. $104,000 as proposed by the Department. Proposed by the Mayor, $87,550. Actual for 205, 206 was the same. As of expenditures, as of 1/31/07, $200. Is there anybody that would like to speak to Community Action, the Community Action Committee? Anybody would like to speak? Are there any committee members that would like to ask a question? Thank you. We'll move...
I'm curious about the large grant that was given to them last year. And to date, or as of the end of January, they've only spent $200. And yet, we're proposing, you know, to give them the same amount this year. I find that difficult to reconcile.
I don't... I'm not sure of the answer for that. That might be something that we need to look at. Regarding Mayor Bowden, Community Action Committee requesting $104,000 and proposed by you $87,550.
And to date, they've only spent $200?
Well, actually, the way their billing works, a lot of their expenditures are backloaded, so their expenditures won't appear on that form probably till May. But they do routinely go through their entire grant. We fund them just like we always have each year.
Okay.
Although they do come in with additional...
I'm not questioning the agency. I'm just questioning...
But they do pay spending.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Next, 202, Connecticut Institute for Communities, CIFC. Proposed by the Department, $2500, $250,000. As proposed by the Mayor, $97,550. As I understand it, CIFC will also be overseeing Harambe. And sir, would you like to address... Please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Jim Maloney. Members of the committee, I am a resident and taxpayer of the city of Danbury, and I serve as the President of the Connecticut Institute. You asked for additional information.
Thank you, sir.
So this is literally hot off the press. This is our 2006 annual report. The ink may literally not be dried, but happy to give it to you. And it includes a variety of documents. Mayor, well, here. I'm here tonight for two issues. The Mayor, in consultation with us, asked us to assist with the Harambe Youth Service Program, which is a recreation, education, developmental program. It operates out of the Armory. And our organization has the capacity to give them some help with grants and administration, and the Mayor asked us to do that. We asked in turn for some additional support so that we could help do that, and the Mayor was kind enough to recommend some funding for that purpose, about a fifth of what we asked for. So if there is anything left at the bottom of your barrel, we could, in fact, use some additional help with support we are going to give to the Harambe program. But the bigger issue that I'm here tonight on is Even Start. Even Start is a program we do not currently run. Even Start is a program that provides continuing education for young women who are pregnant and therefore leave school, and childcare for their infants and toddlers. The federal government funds it in part, the Board of Education funds it in part. Unfortunately, over the last couple of years, there's been about $150,000 cutback in the federal support for this program. This is really the last chance that these young women, teenagers basically, have to keep their educational program together and get ahead. We've agreed, again, if there's support available, we run the Head Start program in town, among other things, we've agreed to, in effect, take on the childcare piece of that, the infant care and the toddler care, while the Board of Education, through the Regional Adult Education Program, would continue to do the adult ed piece, the moms, in other words, okay? But to do that, we need about $150,000. And we've made a similar presentation to the United Way, and that's under active consideration. I've talked to the leadership of the Board of Education, and I've talked to the Mayor about that, and we're hopeful that somehow we find the ability to make this program continue to be available. I want to introduce Dr. Dawn Ballard. Dr. Ballard is the Director of the... All right? Yeah. Okay. Dr. Ballard is the Director of the Even Start program. She'll just say a few words, okay?
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I just wanted to share really quickly some national statistics on teen pregnancy and some local statistics on teen pregnancy. 1 million teens in the United States are going to become pregnant over the next 12 months, in the next year. More than 50% of these teens are 17 years old or younger when they have their first pregnancy. 40% of young women become pregnant before they reach the age of 20. The United States has doubled the adolescent pregnancy and birth rate than any other industrialized country. The poorer the young woman, the more likely she will become a teen mother. Less than one-third of these teens who have babies before the age of 18 ever finish high school, and almost 50% of all teen mothers end up on welfare. What I want to show you is, class of 2001, that's when we became a teen parent program in Danbury, we had seven graduates. We're a brand-new program. 2002, we had 15 graduates. 2003, we had 12 graduates. 2004, 12 graduates. 2005, 12 graduates. And just this past year, 13 graduates with the class of 2006.
Commendable.
These are young women that otherwise have no other option to finish high school. When they come to Danbury, Even Start, a bus picks them up at 8:00 in the morning. They're in the classroom with their child at 8:30, settling them in our licensed daycare so that they can start classes at 9:00 AM. They're in class from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, finishing their high school diploma. We have certified teachers come in and teach English, math, science, history, computer classes so that they can get an actual high school diploma. They take an hour of parenting classes. We do an hour of day of parent and child time together, where we teach them how to be with their children, read with their children, sing with their children. And we do a monthly home visit. These young women are actually in school longer than they would be if they were still in Danbury High School, because the bus picks them up at 8:00 AM, they get home at 4:00 PM. So that's an eight-hour day. It's mandatory attendance, it's year-round, they're required to come in the summer. And what I can tell you, because I just finished my PhD, and my research was on teen mothers and success statistics, with our local program here in Danbury, I've had 71 graduates in the past six years. Of those graduates, 80% go on to become successful in life. And when I say successful in life, that is, they get off of welfare, they become self-sufficient, they support themselves and their child. So what better purpose do we have if we're trying to get these young women off of welfare to become self-sufficient than to provide them a program to do that?
Thank you very much.
And Michelle's one of my students, she just wanted to say a few words.
Hi, I'm 17 years old. I started Danbury Even Start in 2005, November, I was pregnant. This school helped me out a lot. They pushed me through and helped me become stronger. I'm going to start college in the fall, I'm going to be at West Con.
That's very nice.
I would like to be a teacher.
Good. I hope you make it.
They are helping me achieve my goal.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I could just conclude with one comment. This is not a permanent request. I want to be clear about this. I've said this to the Mayor. We believe there is federal money available for an early Head Start program in Danbury that would make this childcare situation unnecessary. The reason Danbury has no early Head Start program, has a Head Start program, but nothing for the infants and toddlers, is there was no physical facilities. Take special facilities, okay? Through the Mayor's leadership, we are going to have, at the old Emanuel Lutheran School, the new Head Start Center, we will have facility for baby care and toddler care. That will qualify us for an early Head Start program. So in somewhere between two, three, four years, we'll be able to replace this funding with federal funding for early Head Start.
Thank you very much.
So we appreciate your help.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, through you too, Mr. Maloney, please. $150,000 for this Even Start program. Could you just break that down just a little bit for me? You have listed here 23 children. Dr. Ballard talked about 12 graduates, I'm assuming they're more than a year. $150,000 for 23 children. Help me out.
Well, it's 23 moms and another 23 children. The total program is about $400,000. About 2 and 1/4 is for childcare. Childcare is obviously expensive. You have to have a high faculty, teacher to student ratio, particularly among the toddlers and the infants. So you basically have, for two classrooms, toddlers and infants, you have four people at all times.
Four children.
Right. And if it goes, that's four adults every day, all year long, is what it comes down to.
All right. And one other question, if I might...
Please, if you would.
The relationship here with Harambe, help me understand the funding.
Yes.
You've made a request for Harambe under Connecticut Institute.
Yes.
Harambe has made a request for $87,500.
Yes.
Is this a duplicate request, or is it two separate requests?
Well, it is two separate requests. What the Mayor has done in his budget is recommended to you that you fund that $87,000 plus $10,000, so it's a total of $97,000. And we will then take over the sponsorship of Harambe. So the other $87,000 is not required, if that's the way you go.
Okay.
If you accept the Mayor's recommendation...
It's two requests for the same money.
That's right.
So when we get to Harambe, we can remove that request.
I don't expect they will make a separate presentation.
We'd fund Harambe.
Oh, okay. They were just requesting.
They were requesting, but any time the request came in, Jim and I had sat down.
Okay. I'm happy. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, you may.
Through the Chair, too, the Congressman. Jim, it's good to see you.
Thanks, sir.
I see that you've requested 250. The Administration has allocated 97,550. And then you've got a breakdown in this column for the 250, $50,000 in support of Even Start, which sounds like a great program. And just running the math, it sounds like what you're spending to educate these women is about what the Danbury Public Schools system spends to educate their own.
It is, without childcare. Without childcare. Plus, we provide the childcare. Right.
It sounds like you're in the ballpark. So my question to you is, it looks like the Administration's proposed about one-third, approximately, of what you've asked for. How are you going to reduce the other allocations? That $50,000 for Even Start, the $100,000 for Harambe, because we're not giving anything to Harambe at all. Will it all be dropped down by two-thirds, or do you have a...
No. What the Mayor proposed in his budget was the 90... We asked for $100,000 for Harambe and $50,000 for Harambe improvement. Okay? We're basically saying, well, some other day for that $50,000, okay? On the $100,000 for Harambe, 97,500 is close enough, okay?
But I only see, for the Connecticut Institute for Communities, for your group...
Right.
I only see an allocation of 97,550 total.
Right. We understand that. And that's why we're here. That's why we're here. All of that will be for Harambe.
All of this is for Harambe?
Yes.
So Even Start would get nothing?
No, that's right. That's why we're here on the issue of Even Start. That's right. And we asked for $50,000 from the city and $50,000 from the Board of Ed, which is a total of 100, okay? So that's the request for Even Start, in effect, is $100,000. The final piece was for general support for the organization. And again, I've had the conversation with the Mayor, and it will take things one step at a time. We aren't pursuing that other request.
Okay. I'm sorry. $50,000 from the Board of Ed, $50,000 from the city, that's the 100.
Right.
That's what you're asking for.
That's right. Plus, we're asking for your support for the Mayor's proposal in regard to Harambe, which is $97,500. That's right.
Which appears only under your group.
Yes, sir.
The only funds presently allocated to your group, the 97,550, you will then be sending in their entirety to Harambe.
We will be using that entire fund for Harambe. Yes, yes. Harambe does have other resources. One of the things we're going to do is work with them on some of their other resources. They've made a request, they have some grants outstanding. We've identified some additional grant opportunities for Harambe. That's one of the reasons the Mayor asked us to do this, is we are going to try to file some grants and get some additional resources elsewhere as well.
With due respect, we need to...
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much. Councilman Bassel.
Chairman. Let me just, on the request for Even Start, I just want the committee to understand that that money was previously funded by a federal grant, ran through the Board of Ed. So what you're being asked to is to pick up the lapsed grant from the Board of Ed through the city side of the budget. Part of the discussions that we're having is perhaps the Board of Ed ought to be assuming the lapsed grants, particularly with the large amount of dollars that were appropriated from the shares.
Thank you. Councilman Bassel, thank you.
Jim? Okay. I don't know whether or not you can answer this question, but I know in the past...
Paul, if you would just...
Thank you. I know in the past Harambe has made money themselves. They had fundraisers. Can you tell me how much money they made this year fundraising?
No, yeah. Bill, this is the Executive Director of Harambe's here, maybe you can ask that question.
We had a fundraiser several months ago to the concerts. The college was able to make about $25,000 out of that concert. We also had a raffle. We made, out of the raffle, approximately about $1,500, maybe more, or vice versa. The amounts, I'm not sure. But we raised about $2,300, $300,000.
For the whole year?
And we got a grant from the cultural commission through a 16-week bureau. And we used it with some art classes and art students.
And how many students or how many people does your organization handle during the year? Like, for the kids that go there, approximately how many children do you oversee?
I have from 65 to 100 kids a day. Both from underprivileged areas, all of them from areas with MR in... For redevelopment, there's housing developments, most of our kids and the surrounding areas. Some of the kids walk in now. I lost funding last year for my van. My van picked kids up from housing development to take the younger ones home. And we had kids from 6-11. We had to cut that because of a lack of funding. We had budget cuts. We got some money back last year from the budget cuts. But we also got additional funding cut from the United Way. So our vans are not operating at this particular point in time. The reason why we had requested some support from Mr. Maloney, who was on our board and suggested that he take office out.
And my last question, Bill. Are all these children from the Danbury area only?
All of the kids that I mentioned are from the Danbury area.
Even more than that, almost all of them are from Danbury.
Yeah, that's what I wanted, yes. That's what I thought.
And underprivileged areas.
Right. Oh, that I do know.
You don't have too many kids from Ridgefield.
Are you kidding?
No, we don't. We really don't.
I think you're trying to kid me.
Councilman Bassel.
Thank you.
who was on our board and suggested that they take off his hours.
And my last question, my last question, Bill. Are all these children from the Danbury area only?
All of the kids that I mentioned are from the Danbury area.
Okay.
Even more than that, almost all of them are from Danbury.
Yeah, that's what I wanted. Yes. That's what I thought.
And underprivileged areas.
Right. Oh, that I do know.
You don't have too many kids from Ridgefield.
Are you kidding?
No, we don't. We really don't.
I think you're trying to kid me.
Councilwoman Bassel.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, we need to move on. Thank you very much. Danbury Animal Welfare Society. Excuse me?
Could I ask a question, Mr. Maloney?
You may. Please, two minutes because we're dragging now and we need to move on.
Mr. Maloney, do you or can you use volunteers instead of some of the administrative costs that we have?
The, sure. The answer is volunteers are always most welcome, okay? That would not displace any of the costs. If you take a look at the budget, eighty-seven thousand dollars, you know, basically pays the director's salary and pays the rent and the electricity. But volunteers are always welcome.
Do you have volunteers for childcare?
The Head Start program.
That's two questions, ma'am. You asked for one. Thank you very much.
The answer is yes. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. One does not mean two. Thank you. Danbury Animal Welfare Society, proposed by the department, four thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Proposed by the mayor, four thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Is there anybody that would like to respond to that? Please.
Yes, my name is John Chino. I'm the president of Danbury Animal Welfare. I just wanted to explain very quickly. I understand you're, it's dragging. Because recently there was an article in the press that I think misrepresented the organization. Where this money's going, we're the only animal welfare in the organization in the area that has a clinic. The money's gonna be spent entirely within that clinic doing low-cost spay and neuter and dealing with the feral cat population. Strictly in Danbury, we recognize twenty-two sites. We're dealing with them. We have been dealing with them last year. We're doing as much as we can. We have a vet coming in twice a week. And spay and neuter, trap and return, all of that. If there's any questions that you have, please let me know.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I could just mention that last year, a friend of mine was scratched by a feral cat. Spent three days in the hospital. So it's clearly, it's a problem.
Yeah, there's a lot of them. It's a real serious problem.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Danbury Children First, proposed seventy-five thousand dollars. As proposed by the mayor, sixty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. Thank you.
Hello.
How do you do?
Fine, thanks. My name is Linda Pasco and I'm the director at Danbury Children First. And I want to say that it's not that, that we're not unhappy with the generous grant allocation. But I did want to explain to you a little bit more about our services and our particular needs. As you see, we did apply for more. The, I did want to say we're a Danbury organization. Ninety-nine percent of the families and children that we serve are from the Danbury community. We serve unique niches in this community. We focus on probably, I would say, three main areas. First, promoting children's school success. We provide programs around parental involvement. And I don't know if you know that that is one of the keys to children succeeding in school. And we focus on two areas, on promoting learning at home and also communications with parents and teachers. We also provide parent leadership programs, which prepare parents to work in the community, not only in behalf of their own children, but other children as well. We also serve as a catalyst in the community to try to, we listen to parents as well as others in our community to try to provide more of a seamless continuum for services for kids and families. In the last year alone, we brought two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, not to our own agency, but to the community to serve young kids with social, emotional needs. As an example, we also advocated at state level, both legislative session, but also with the executive branch, to try to identify what would be good for our community. And I will say that we have been having challenges in meeting our annual budget. The city is only one of several sources. And on the last page of the handout that I gave you, you'll see that we have applied to several sources for funding, not just the city. And when you look at our application, if you had the city application, you'll see that we've been cutting expenses, including staffing, to try to meet our annual budget.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We will take that into consideration. Thank you.
What I, maybe I misstated it. What I meant was that ninety-nine percent of those who serve are Danbury parents and children, yes. And we're probably reaching about a third of the population in Danbury.
Thank you very much. We'll move on. Danbury Council of Veterans, proposed by their department, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five dollars. As proposed by the mayor, twenty thousand, six hundred dollars. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to that particular agency? No one? Any committee member? Thank you. We'll move on. Danbury Downtown, Council City, City Center Danbury, as proposed by the department, forty-five thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. As proposed by the mayor, forty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars.
Hi, Andrea Garten-Javara, manager, city center. I'm just here to say that we appreciate the allocation that you've given us.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Anybody have any response questions? Thank you. Let's go on. Danbury Scott Phantom Museum Historical Society, as proposed by the department, thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighteen. As proposed by the mayor, the same, thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. And please.
Mr. Mayor, chairperson, members, my name is Bridget Gerton and I live alone in Esro Road in Danbury. And I am the director of the Danbury Museum Historical Society. And we'd be very grateful recipients of funding and research to choose a follow-up of the mayor's budget. So thank you for your consideration.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Danbury Regional Child Adventski, Advent. Can't get it out. Center. Yeah, Advent. Thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars as proposed by the department and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars as proposed by the mayor. I spoke to the, one of the directors today and she agreed that that was, that was very good funding. Anybody would like to respond? Please.
Isn't this another donation?
Pardon me, please?
Is this a duplication of somebody or other agency that was part of the same?
At this time, I would say that no to that. And as, as the agencies have come before the mayor and this committee, we're looking at them individually. There is a possibility down the line that we will, through the mayor and the council, we'll look at all of the different agencies and make sure that the mission statements and the, and the budgets are in line. So it's not something we're gonna do tonight, though. Thank you. All right. We'll move on. Danbury Visiting Nurse Association, as proposed by their department, one hundred thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. And that's the same as proposed by the mayor. Would anybody like to speak to that organization? Please.
Yeah, I'm Mary Ann Bergman. I'm the executive director, CEO of the Danbury V and A. And we want to, want to express our thanks for the funding. All of the dollars in the grant are direct service dollars that goes to the care of the indigent and those who are unable to pay for care of services. And we are the only one in the community that provides those services. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you for your services. All right. Danbury War Memorial, eighty-five thousand dollar requested by the department. As proposed by the mayor, seventy-five thousand dollars. Would anybody like to respond to that particular request? No, we'll move on. Danbury Youth Services, as proposed by the department, one hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. As proposed by the mayor, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is there anybody who'd like to respond to that? Thank you. Dream Homes Community Center, as proposed by the department, fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. As proposed by the mayor, fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Is there anybody that would like to speak to that? Yes, certainly.
I just want to let the committee know, in addition to the, the total operating budget is ninety thousand dollars. In fact, it's much more than that. But I've been working with the nine other towns in the region. So in addition to our fifty thousand, I've got commitments for close to forty thousand to help them make their whole year budget. So it's one of those true organizations where everybody's putting in dollars and running a mail plan. So we've got some really good commitments in the last couple of years.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bergman.
I'll speak to, we reviewed their annual report the other night and they're on target where they're supposed to be for the homeless.
Good. Very good. Okay. Families Network of Western Connecticut, as proposed by the department, thirty-five thousand, twenty dollars. And as proposed by the mayor, thirty-five thousand, twenty dollars. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Susan Gilio. I'm the executive director at Families Network and I'm here just to thank you for the help.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Yes, Councilwoman Tavasak, please.
Question to the executive director of Families, you have a question, Connecticut. Do you provide the same kind of services as the Danbury Regional Child Advocacy Center?
We provide similar services to different populations. I think that it's important to point out. Our programs are specifically targeted for primary prevention. I think that that's important to state here that we're about prevention before a crisis occurs, before child abuse has happened. The programs of the Child Advocacy Center are, not that I should be speaking for them, but intervene at a time when there's imminent danger or risk. We work very closely together to be certain that we're not duplicating services. Fortunately, through the application process, there is ample opportunity to explain that and express that. But certainly through our other funding opportunities, we are readily prepared to do that. And we focus especially on how we're not duplicating services through our grant applications. So much so that we've actually formed different panels and have gone out and done program presentations together to really underscore that we're not duplicating services.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Family and Children's Aid, as proposed by the department, five thousand. As proposed by the mayor, four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Is there anybody who'd like to respond to that? Any committee member? Thank you. Let's go. All right. Geriatric Health Center, as proposed by the department, twenty-one thousand dollars. As proposed by the mayor, twenty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. Anybody would like to speak to that agency? Good Friends Green Chimneys, as proposed by the department, ten thousand dollars. As proposed by the mayor, seven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Would anybody like to comment?
I'm thankful to children and families. Just want to say thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you very much. Harambe, Harambe Center for Youth, we already have that information as presented by Mr. Maloney. Proposed by the department, hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But again, it's being funded under CIFC. So we can go on. Thank you. Healing Heart Center for Grieving Children and Families, proposed by the department, four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. And as proposed by the mayor, the same, four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. Please.
Hi, I'm Terry Knackid. I'm director of community relations and development for regional hospice. The Healing Heart Center for Grieving Children and Families is a program of regional hospices and we very much appreciate your support. This is the only program of its kind in Danbury and we provide comprehensive bereavement support for children and families at no charge.
Thank you very much for what you do. Thank you. Hispanic Center of Greater Danbury, as proposed by the department, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. As proposed by the mayor, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Sir, would you like to?
Yes, my name's John Galliotino. I live at one twenty-nine Lake Place. I'm representing the president, the vice president, the executive board, in other words, couldn't make it here tonight. I don't have any figures with me, but I want to indicate that we are in a change mode. There's four directors that are basically stepping in and running the center on a day-to-day basis until we get a new director come June first. The board has passed a resolution that we would like to stick to the business at hand of teaching people, the immigrants that come in, English, concentrate on the labor and rental issues and the day-to-day business and do less advocacy. I'll answer any questions at that time, but I really can't get into any more statement than that.
So, sir, as a follow-up question, in essence, what you're saying is that there will be a change of whatever.
There's gonna be less advocacy as there was in the past because.
There will be less?
Yes. The board of directors feel that, you know, we have a certain way of thinking and there was a different.
Philosophically.
Yes.
In line with the mission statement with regard to funds and.
Correct.
Thank you.
Could Mr. Galliotino maybe just give two minutes to the, to the board exactly what some of the services that are provided at this thing? Just give us a flavor of what the design is.
The services that will be provided.
Well, we teach, we have a school that teaches people English. We have people that come in from day to day that have labor issues. We make appropriate referrals. Yes, you can say there are other agencies that might do these same things. But, you know, there are people that are, have a better confidence or greater confidence in the people that we have at the center to deal with those referrals. There's rental issues that go on. There's health referrals. Like I said, I'm pitch hitting, so I don't have everything in front of me. But those are the general categories. And at some point, the president and the vice, and the vice president will make a presentation, maybe before the council, you know, with further ideas that we have in mind.
Could I go as far as being very frank with you in a very diplomatic way?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. My feeling is that there has been some controversy regarding where some funds might, might be going for your particular agency. And all due respect to immigrants or illegal immigrants, I have, I have a feeling for all people that strive to do better. But whatever the issue is, needless to say, when it comes down to immigration or illegal immigration, it's a federal issue. The issue that comes before us, and I have to be very honest with you, is that Danbury taxpayers are more than willing to fund agencies. I, as a taxpayer, agree that it's very important. But the same token, we must be assured that whatever we do is done correctly and within the law, so to speak. And I'm sure that that is the issue that we have tonight. I am not demeaning any, any particular culture. We were all immigrants at one time. I'm a vet and everything else. And I feel for people that are struggling to make a better life. But the same token, we have to consider the Danbury taxpayers. So.
I understand what you're saying.
Do you understand where we're coming?
I want to address, Mr. Chairman, something you raised. Between now and May, we're going to do a complete audit of our books. You know, there was something, I take exception, who said in the, in the press that maybe things are not being done properly. And we expect to do a, a complete audit to just to make sure of that issue.
And would that be open, open to the public?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chines.
Thank you. Having looked at, I interviewed myself and given what Mr. Galliotino said previously, I would recommend to the committee to possibly suspend funding of this organization until some time new, larger figures are made available to the committee to where we can get a better understanding of how the funding was probably used in the past. If we owe it to the citizens, then we give a thorough check before we give any funding, a reasonable funding. So.
I.
To at least take it under consideration and given what Mr. Galliotino said today, that maybe these financial changes to this organization, this organization has been around since nineteen sixties. So it's just recently, last year or two, that it's starting to get, seems to be a different mission to what the original mission. it's starting to get, it seems to be a different mission to what the original mission that was established. I think we do owe it to the center that we take a really hard look to make sure that it's still on the force that it's needed, so.
Thank you, Councilman.
At least take that under consideration.
Thank you. Would you be, under that consideration, would you and the other directors be willing to join with us at a latter date?
Sure.
And we would, at this time, maybe, under consideration, maybe we would set aside the funds, the clean the funds for a certain time, until you would come before us and then we would make sure that, you know, you're making your change and we would, please, Councilman.
Maybe we could do something along the same lines that we did with Dream Homes. If you recall, when Dream Homes first came before us, we did something similar to what's being suggested here in terms of maybe granting them first quarter's funds and then asking them at that point to come before the committee and see where we are in terms of funding and their changes and the changes in their missions and see if they've addressed some of the concerns that have been raised.
Mr. Chairman, I might just, just from a process standpoint, our payments go up quarterly fashion.
Right.
There's nothing to say that we can't withhold payment until the council committee, which we convene at a date, is satisfied with whatever requirements. The only issue is if it's completely stricken from the books, it would be a little bit more difficult if you ever wish to reinstate it, but there's nothing says that those checks have, in fact, I have done that to some nonprofits where I haven't given them their check based on some internal auditing issue or some kind of longstanding issue that frankly they haven't met, so. I think one of the issues would be that, you know, the committee would want to articulate to these banks exactly what they're looking for in terms of that and then, you know, discussion ensued.
So, in other words, leave whatever funding intact, but mention that we'll wait to hear from the agency before we actually issue the payment.
That's correct.
Which is what we kind of did with Dream Homes. We funded the whole thing, but-
I'm just saying from a process standpoint to put it back on.
And again, that I think is a consideration that could be quite good and along with what your reorganization, I think that's something that would be beneficial for all concerned. Is there a response?
Mrs. Balsor.
Councilwoman woman Bassel, please.
Johnny, you know, in the past, friends of mine have gone down to the Hispanic Center and they've had letters that were written in Spanish. They were asked to donate twenty-five or forty dollars to the people to interpret them. Some of them could not afford it, but what I want to know is, and they, you know, and they just, they scrunch the money together to get this interpret, to pay to have this done. Is it going to be possible that people can go down and have these interpreted for free because they used to be free, but now all of a sudden, the last couple of years, they are charging? Now, this got to be cash. Now, I would like to know, where is this cash going also?
I can't speak to the day-to-day operations, all I know is that when you have somebody, a new director and you have new policies, I would think that things are going to be more, you know, there's going to be more accountability.
But if someone comes down, John, and he has to have something to turn, do you think they could get it for free now?
I believe that anything is possible, we are trying to implement other fundraising capabilities, you know, you do have-
But to interpret a letter, you know, or a postcard for twenty-five dollars, that's a lot of money for a lot of these people can't afford it.
Right.
And it's cash only, so, yeah.
That, I don't know about.
One of the things we have to think about, if we're going to hold their feet to the fire, if you will, sorry, is that they have to know what it is that we want. So may I make the suggestion that when you do impact point your new director, that maybe either that director come and meet with the committee or with mayor or somewhere so that we can communicate what it is we're looking for, the new director can then put those pieces in place and then we can come together and make sure that everything's on board, whoever wants to do it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I guess we have another committee.
We're going to be doing this today along with the final audit results.
Okay, yeah, but, you know, whatever it is that we, what our expectations are, I think it's only fair to make sure that those are clarified with the new director.
And then we also give you time to reorganize and then we have that, the meeting or meetings. Is that-
That's fair enough.
Okay. Is there, sir?
This is a general comment that applies to all these grants.
All due respect, sir, all due respect.
In line with what Mrs. Bassel said.
Okay.
Why don't, has anybody ever suggested that all the users of these programs contribute whatever they can, parents, et cetera, has that ever been suggested that they do this? Use the program, pay what you can. Thank you.
Well said, thank you. Thank you, sir. We'll move on. Ma'am, one question, not two, thank you.
Ma'am, can I have a name, please? Lisa Martin, Colonel. The Hispanic Center are almost two buildings on West Street, they get funding from one, they also get new funding from other sources. Is there any reason why the city has to keep funding this when they need to have other of the money to get their operating money?
We have, the wrong person here for the complete detailed financing, but if you have a budget and you want to keep it uneven skied, you know, we are, we're working on different fundraisers, I guess that's the best way to answer this, is that we're working on fundraisers to get our revenue up to a certain level and maybe at some point in time we won't need the city funding, but right now, without a significant cut in funding, we'd have to, you know, go to a rental, we'd have to reduce operations.
Yeah, you are, you're already a taxpayer, you're already a taxpayer.
She's out of order.
Excuse me, excuse me. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, please, last comment on this, please.
Margaret Mitchell, Park Place and Main Street. I'd really like to thank the Spanish Learning Center for, or the Hispanic Center for looking at themselves and realizing that they needed to chart a new course. I was their landlord for nine years, over that period of time, they would often skirt the law or just be in violation of the law, and as a very patriotic American, that was painful and I felt caught in a dilemma, but thank you so much for working on this and thank you all for working on this.
Thank you very much for your comments.
My name is Patricia Cadet and I live in Danbury. All I want to know is, will we have this same opportunity to speak when they're prepared with what they have to do?
I'm sure that at the time, the Hispanic Center directors would come before the committee, I'm sure that under the rules and regs, there would be no reason why you couldn't be there and have a comment regarding saying.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir, let's move on. Interfaith AIDS Ministry, as proposed by the department, thirty thousand dollars, as proposed by the mayor, twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Any comments regarding? Councilman?
Thank you. Through the chair to the mayor. We heard a comment this evening that the other AIDS project of Greater Danbury, which was zeroed out, they were requesting fourteen thousand, I guess the federal government had covered by forty thousand, and they sort of figured that fourteen or fifteen would have been the Danbury portion, probably would have been more than that, but they were giving the city the benefit of the doubt, they didn't get anything, and we heard, actually comments to the chair tonight, that this Interfaith AIDS Ministry would be covering that. Do you know anything about that?
Well, first of all, they weren't zeroed out, each project, we never got any money ever, so.
Compared to their requests, true.
No, they never got it.
No, but I'm saying compared to their requests, they asked for fourteen.
But we've never funded it. So what happened was several years ago, the council had made a decision not to add any more grant agencies to the grant agency list. That was a year we had to roll back and come back on funding across the board, fifteen percent. Each year, each project in Danbury has come in with a request, which is why you see in the budget book that we don't fund it, because we made a decision, a strategic decision years ago, to fund the Interfaith AIDS Ministry. I'm not aware, and I'll certainly check up with Director of Finance in the morning, about any pass through funding. I would think for fourteen grand, there may be a way which I could fund that internally up to July one to get them through or even after July one, and that's something that I certainly can play around with, to get them some dollars if it's, you know, critical for the mission, we obviously don't want them to, everybody serves so in his purpose, but that's the rationale.
I think what happened is the way the government now defines how you have AIDS, the city of Danbury has quote-unquote "lost" several hundred AIDS clients, they actually have HIV, but they haven't developed a symptoms yet. Because they haven't developed the symptoms, they're off the Fed books, they lost the forty thousand, but they're still treating these people, so the need is there, these are Danbury citizens, they need to take care of it.
And actually, if you like, I'll meet with Roberta and see if I can move some money around, maybe come with a request to you guys, it won't be in the next July one year, but it might be in June, which will get our-
That would be great, thank you.
Councilwoman Tabersak?
Councilman Riley, I think you're as old as I am, so you will probably recall that some of the things that the AIDS practice does, the AIDS testing and how it used to be done, which in the Department of Health is in Danbury, so I'm sorry that we can't help fund the work that we used to do in the House and the Health Department because it is certainly a misfortune.
Thank you, Councilman, give us a second, you're correct. Literacy Volunteers of America, of America, Danbury, as proposed by the department, eight thousand dollars, as proposed by the mayor, seven thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars. Any comments, please? Thank you, move on. Midwestern Connecticut Council on Alcoholism, as proposed by the department, forty thousand dollars, as proposed by the mayor, thirty-five thousand, twenty dollars. Please, sir.
Yes, I'm Joe Sullivan, I'm the president of MCCA, and I just wanted to come here personally and to thank the council, I wish our full request, I understand, you know, was granted, but I understand the pressures that the mayor's office and the council is under, so we're grateful what we do get and try to serve the community well. About fifty percent of the people that MCCA serves are Danbury residents, and I think MCCA, I just want to say, because of the help that the city gives us and United Way and others, that MCCA is the top-rated large substance abuse agency in the state according to the latest DMS Department of Mental Health survey of clients that we service, so thanks for your help and thanks for your support, there's some literature that describes all the programs that-
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, Northwest Regional Mental Health Board, oh, please.
Hi, I'm Lorette Lawler, just had a curious question on the MCCA. Do they receive funding from anywhere else because the numbers in the board said they serve forty-six hundred clients and sixteen hundred of Danbury? I don't think that's fifty percent, but I just wondered, are there other towns that are supporting these things besides Danbury?
The numbers, that's one of the programs, I think, we're saying, with the numbers overall, that we serve, the question was, can we get any financial support from any other town? No, we don't, and I think that's a disgrace to the other towns. We tried, they amended that, and at one time, we did that, but because every town has budget problems each year and they go to rec, don't they go to rec, random, the care field that turned down last year, I did three times, you know, where we don't have, and the ones who get suffering because of that are taken by bars. I will say this, MCCA has made a strategic decision, a very new residential program, to place them in other towns, lost the old care field group home last year in Apple, we're looking at projects in Middlebury right now, and we believe in them here, don't put everything in Danbury and share that concern, we'd like to have the support from the other towns, disgrace that the official-
Thank you, thank you. Let's move on. Northwest Regional Mental Health Board, proposed by the department, eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-one, as proposed by the mayor, seven thousand, one hundred, seventy-nine dollars. Anybody would like to respond? Councilwoman Tabersak?
Thank you, Councilman Riley. I would like to see this item under memberships in our general fund, as HEP is in the county state, it looks to be a work category charged. Please, on a positive.
Okay, thank you. Any other, anybody would like to respond, anybody else?
Councilwoman Tabersak, did you say membership? I didn't, I didn't hear you.
In our general fund, we have a category called memberships.
Okay, I didn't hear, okay, thanks, that's all I wanted to say.
Penn Brook Cemetery Association, as proposed by the department, one hundred and fifty-five, as proposed by the mayor, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Regional Hospice of Western Connecticut, as proposed by the department, eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, as proposed by the mayor, the same, eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five. Please.
I'm Terri Knackid, Director of Community Relations and Development for Regional Hospice, just wanted to thank you for your support. We are a not-for-profit, Bible one C three, community-based hospice agency, and we provide a continuum of programs for end-of-life care, and we very much appreciate your support.
Thank you very much for what you do. The Bow Street YMCA, as proposed by the department, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, as proposed by the mayor, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I received an email today from the letter that was generated from City Hall, and they're very pleased with the proposal as given by the mayor. Councilwoman Tabersak?
Councilwoman Riley, was this a new request last year?
Pardon me, I was taking-
Was this a new grant last year?
I'm not positive.
It was added last year into the grants, it's the second year of a three-year commitment as bridge funding while they rebuild their membership. I will tell you, we had our grant opening in October, it was very successful, we had a five-hundred-thousand-dollar state grant along with about two-hundred-thousand dollars of private funding that's been raised for the improvements to the facility, and basically, if enrollment projections continue, we'll be able to wean ourselves off the grant next year and solely be able to zero it out based on their improved number six. They're doing very well on new memberships, these months we're seeing a larger expansion.
Thank you, Mary.
So we're not adding new agencies except for this one?
Well, this isn't really a longstanding commitment, this really is a three-year commitment to bridge funds, not in terms of an agency where you're saying, we're going to give you six thousand or ten thousand every year forever. This was very clear when we made this appropriation the first year that it would be for, only for three years while they got back on the grid.
Thank you very much. Here we go. Next, Regional YMCA of Western Connecticut, Escape to the Arts, as proposed by the department, thirty thousand, six hundred and forty-three, as proposed by the mayor, the same, thirty thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. Any comments? The Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, as proposed by the department, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and as proposed by the mayor, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. Please.
My name is Lori Farrell, I'm the new director of the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. I was the coordinator for the past two and a half years, and I wanted to thank Mayor Bowden and the board for continuing to support the contributions of the senior volunteers in your community and what they do for your organizations in Danbury and the Greater Danbury area. And again, I want to thank you for your support.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. TBICO, as proposed by the department, ten thousand dollars, as proposed by the mayor, four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Please, ma'am.
I'm Luann Lumber, I'm the president of the ICA, and we're hoping that we can get a little bit of an increase mainly because we're the only agency in Danbury that provides employment-focused services. We serve every agency in Danbury, we accept referrals from all agencies. Amos House, actually, their clients have to be a participant in order to be a resident. We don't charge for any of it because if people have employment needs, they- We don't charge for any of it, because if people have employment needs, they can't afford to pay. But what we ask is for, we kind of do a time talent treasure, so if they can afford it, they can make a donation, otherwise they help in the corporate closet, or whatever it is they can do. We focus on jobs that are stable, full-time jobs, employment that's going to be a way for them to advance. We have a strong financial literacy program. We have a credit repair approach. We ask everyone to pull their credit report, because it's important they understand the importance of credit, begin to fix it. And so, it affects their housing, it affects their employment. We have a program called Financial Freedom Savings Initiative that we work to deal with, savings backed in Danbury and union savings, because people who have messed up become unbanked, and they can't even give the bank anything. So if they are in our program, they can take their certificate to the bank, and they can open a passbook account that's no interest, no minimum, no fees, and no questions asked. And it gets them into the system again. We have started evening and Saturday programs, because there are more people who are underemployed than unemployed. And so, we do programs Tuesday nights, Thursday nights, Saturday mornings, as well as in the mornings and in the afternoons. And I brought some material, you have that. We have people that go to college, so.
You'll take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
And just want to mention that with housing and homelessness being so critical, no matter how many years that you build, if people can't pay rent because they don't have a job, they're still going to be homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Volunteer Center?
Oh, question.
Oh, excuse me. Sir?
I'm Gregory Morrison. I live in Danbury. Question, do you request to replace some of these people with employees in here? Do you request that they be sold into the program?
You would?
Yeah.
We, we raise one. Actually, we have funded the supply, because we get media from our ways of support. And I just want to make a note, the Department of Labor has changed the funding stream with new, actions department, education. In order for someone to be funded for training through their voucher program, the provider now has to be a community college or proprietary school, and able to provide a credential. The people that really qualify for vouchers through, you know, the funding stream, workforce money, don't have credentials to get into the places that are eligible to accept vouchers. And as a result, we've ended up providing the services at the cost. We also started a second language program. So we are saying that ESL should not be English as a second language, it should be everyone has a second language. So we have English tutorials, we don't have SLE. But we also have Portuguese and Spanish tutorials, so that everybody can learn the language for all the cultural work.
Thank you very much. Volunteer Center, as proposed by the department, three thousand dollars. As proposed by the mayor, two thousand one hundred and one dollars. Any, anybody have a comment, please?
I'd just like to say thank you for this.
You're welcome. Thank you. We Care, as proposed by the department, thirty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. As proposed by the mayor, the same, thirty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars.
I'm the head of conference, we're the director of We Care, and I came here for a special event today, and I'm trying to.
Thank you very much.
All right. Did we do? Women's Center of Greater Danbury, as proposed by the department, eighty thousand dollars. As proposed by the mayor, seventy thousand forty dollars. Any comments from anyone, committee members?
And at this time, that is the last, last agency that we have to look at. I would like to see if we could ask, Councilwoman Pavel?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that the committee recommends to the council as a whole to adopt the mayor's budget for the grant agencies as presented, with the only change being that the money to the Hispanic Center will be delayed until the committee has had a chance to convene and review their mission statement, their direction, their new director, and their full audit review.
All right. There has been a motion made, there has been a second, and at this time, at this time, only committee members will discuss this motion just made from Councilman. Discussion, if you will.
Thank you. There were a number of people who came up here tonight and made some pretty good cases for funding changes, and I don't want to go to a motion yet until we at least have a chance to discuss some of those, those items. Specifically, the Red Cross Wheels program, Amos House, Even Start, and TBICO would be agencies that I'd like us to at least take a look at. The Red Cross Wheels program, as was stated and we discussed earlier, is an important piece of transportation for people who are not in the project, housing developments, but other citizens, particularly our senior citizens, who need help getting to their appointments and their, keeping to their basic needs. The Amos House allocation is only approximately twenty-five percent of what they asked for. I think we ought to think about that. Mr. Maloney made the request that we, that we fund the Even Start program with fifty thousand dollars, considering his two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar request for all those programs that he was overseeing, and yet only receiving the money that would work for Harambe, and leaving Even Start out of that altogether. And then TBICO, which does such tremendous work in our communities, only being funded at twenty-five percent of what they requested. So I would like to see us at least have some discussion about those things, and hopefully maybe come to some agreement about some increases in those programs.
Any other comments, please? Discussion?
One of the things that I just would like to just make everyone aware of, committee, that any changes that we make to the board budget is going to make a change in the mill rate in the tax, for citizens of Danbury. I want caution members to that. These numbers are funded to levels close to where they were funded last year, and that any increase to that is an increased burden on the taxpayer. One of the other things I wanted to do was, I had mentioned last week in Government One about senior transportation to the mayor, and I'd like to give the mayor an opportunity, because we did have some discussion, both during the committee and offline, about the possibility of a program that's going to, is going to come into effect for senior transportation. And the other thing that I'm sorry about is that Mr. Malone left, because I wanted to ask him, you.
Maloney.
No, not Mr. Maloney, Mr. Malone.
It's the Red Cross.
From the Red Cross. Because he said they needed around seventy thousand dollars of funding for that program, and they were asking us for twenty. I was curious to know where the other fifty could come from. If I could, I'd like to just ask the mayor, if we could discuss.
As an executive official, the mayor is an executive official member of all committees, so, per city charter, and let me just say, Mr. Chairman, a couple thoughts crossed my mind since Mr. Sanz comments and Mr. Collison, I'm going to kind of wrap them in together. We could, and we are committed to investigating some kind of senior transportation program that would be able to impact the seniors in Danbury, that would be more flexible than the sweetheart service, which you heard tonight is a problem, because you have to wait two weeks, and all the times you have to book, and it's very difficult to get, to get on their list, to get picked up. We've been looking at creating some kind of program, which I was going to bring from the council. However, we may want to take our resources, if the Red Cross can do it, as long as they'll commit to doing just Danbury. I don't want to be underwriting transportation for somebody in Salisbury, because remember, their catchment area goes all the way up to the Massachusetts border. And so, by placing, you know, money towards them, I want to make sure that we're transporting Danbury seniors around. So it might behoove us to approach the Red Cross and say, "Look, we'll give you a significant amount of dollars if we know that you're going to use those dollars for Danbury seniors specifically for your volunteers and gas and all that stuff." And that might be a good way to address it, or we may want to create a separate program, which I've been looking at, which would require additional funding itself. In terms of getting money, you know, Mr. Collison mentioned his statement about welders, we have to be careful about impacting the mill rate. By adding a lot of these dollars, you know, you're going to impact the mill rate. However, you might want to take, if your will is to, is to do something with Red Cross, you might want to take the allocated dollars for Hispanic Center, move that over into the line item for the Red Cross, with the understanding that I'll come back to the council in July, once the committee meets, with just a request to fill that, we'll keep, in other words, we'll keep the account open, it just won't be funded until you've all satisfied with your new plan, if you are satisfied or not, would be the will of the committee to look at that. So that may be a way to get, to move some of that money around and get where you want. In terms of Mr. Maloney's problem, there's a significant request for dollars, and really that I don't think should be funded through the direct grant program. That's a board of that program, the board of that is giving six point one million more dollars this year. I think that they really owe a responsibility, not to fund it in any kind of services, but to fund that with actual dollars, so that we can continue the Even Start program. I'm going to approach Dr. Pascharella about that and his team, to see if there's a way we can make that work with some flexible money from Mr. Maloney. I think that, based on the commitment we're making to education this year, there really should be no reason why we couldn't absorb that cost.
Thank you, Mayor Bowden.
And TBICO, is there anything we can do for them?
Well, Luanne does a terrific job, and it is traditional that she asks for much more than what she gets. You know, again, looking at lapse funds, it is March now, so we're going to start looking at moving a few dollars around, if I can get a few bucks that, in this fiscal year toward that we cover for next year. I'm willing to do that. I think AIDS Project, Greater Danbury would be a priority, and if it's a matter of a couple thousand bucks, you know, the council.
Do those require motions, or?
Not here. I would bring that request probably in June, once I get a clearer picture.
You won't forget them.
No, no. I think we pretty much made a commitment to that. I mean, you could even take, if you want to, what you could do, Councilwoman, with Mr. Riley's blessing, what you could do is, I think the Hispanic Center's in for twenty-eight thousand?
I forgot.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five something.
You could take.
Twenty and five.
And take care of TBICO. We still have, there is a problem with Even Start, and I want to have some more conversations with the board, and I wish I could visit with the council later on.
I'd like to ask you about that offline, then, if that's all right. We go to our next meeting. Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, then, that we take the twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe that's approximately the amount that's being held in suspense for the Hispanic Center, apply twenty thousand dollars to the Red Cross Wheels program, and five thousand dollars to the TBICO program.
We need to ensure that the Wheels program for Danbury.
For Danbury. For Danbury citizens only.
So we're saying, we add the twenty thousand and then add the five.
One second. As long as it's for Danbury, as long as the Wheels program gets a sanction.
I'll talk to Mike.
So we have.
That's an amendment.
As an amendment, is there any, any other discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, transportation for the elderly is a critical issue in Danbury, throughout the rest of the country, but particularly some of these cities that don't have strong door-to-door public transportation to begin with. We need to do, need to do everything that we can to support that. I'm not sure using the Red Cross to provide basic transportation for the elderly is the way to go. I would like to see a citywide, city-directed, perhaps a private public partnership that can look at transportation for the elderly on a community level that doesn't necessarily have to use the skills that the Red Cross brings to the table and perhaps the extra expense. It's almost like using paramedics to deliver Q-tips or something like that. We need them in the community, we may not need them for this specific reason. I'd like to do a little more investigation about the Red Cross's plans to provide transportation before I'm comfortable signing out.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. At this time, I would like to.
Can I respond to Councilwoman LaTella, please?
Please, if you will.
From what I understand, it's a program that's already been in place and successful, and that with all of the requests that have been put on the Red Cross over the last few years, as we're all aware, this is a program that had to fall by the wayside because they didn't have the funding for it. So it's already an established program that's been working and working successfully. I'm not opposed to looking at something else either, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, they have had a mechanism in place that's worked.
At this time, thank you. I would like to, at this time, ask for a vote on the amendment.
I don't know if we're ready for that. We're going to have some more discussion.
One more comment, please.
About the amendment. Mr. LaTella, I understand both of your points very well. And I don't think that us sending the twenty thousand dollars to the Red Cross necessarily will commit us to that. I think it'll enter us into discussion and the money that we have the availability of being there. If the discussions with the Red Cross don't pan out, and the Wheels program, if it seems like it'll work for the students, I don't think that necessarily has to be funded through there.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I think the conversation would go, we have twenty thousand dollars for you, we want to make sure that's put towards Danbury residents. If he says, "Look, based on our organizational model, we, you know, we can't do it that way," then I have to say, "Look, we have to reevaluate our commitment." I'd come back to you and say, "Let's redeploy that money to go towards just a citywide program." And I think, you know, this is one of those issues where the Red Cross is a great organization, want to help them, but we have to help our residents first, our seniors first, actually. I will say that that program that Councilman Sanz was mentioning is very efficient, and it's done primarily volunteers, but they do a really good job of getting seniors to their appointments. But I just want a commitment out of them to use that to do.
Well, I don't know, then, my, then, if we're in question about whether to use this money for them or not, is it more appropriate to say, "We'll take that twenty thousand dollars and put it in advance and decide on this program or that program?"
At this.
And allocate it for senior or transportation issues? I'm just asking procedural questions.
Yeah, I think we can always read, read and plan money later on. I think we leave it on the Red Cross, if there's a major issue with that, I'll come back to the council and say, "Look, they can't do it." I'll report back to the council.
I, myself, as the chair, I feel confident that this is, this is a decent, good amendment. I'd like to ask for a vote on the amendment at this time. At this time, I'm asking for a vote on the amendment. Thank you.
Could we repeat the amendment?
I'd be happy to repeat.
Please.
And Dan has shown me here his book, the allotment for the Hispanic Center was nine, twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. My motion improved twenty-five thousand. And I think I'd like to leave it, and we'll leave the nine hundred and fifteen just sitting there for now, toward the Hispanic Center and whatever we do with that. So the motion was to take twenty thousand dollars and apply it toward the Wheels program and meet their request, and then to take the other five thousand dollars and apply it to the TBICO request, which would bring them almost to their request. They, there have been given, they asked for ten, they've been given forty-three seventy-eight. If we add five to that, it'll be ninety-three seventy-eight. So it's, it's pretty, pretty close to what they asked for.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
That's my motion, or my amendment to the motion, sir.
Can we have a vote? Vote on the motion itself at this time. All in favor, please?
Aye.
The motion has passed as, as read by Councilwoman Sanz. Now, I would ask for a motion, a vote, a motion to regarding all the grants.
We have a.
Oh, we just have to go for the vote on, that's right, too. How about, we had discussion on it, on the.
Amendment, we didn't have discussion on the motion.
Have we had any discussion on the, on the actual motion? Is. Have we had any discussion on the, on the actual motion? Is there any discussion on the actual motion at this time?
I'd like to point out that over the last five years, the, well, let's take FY02, 03, the total percent of the budget that went to grant agencies was point nine percent. Let's call it one percent. So all of these funds that we're talking about work out to something less than one penny per dollar per year for people with AIDS, for children that need to learn how to speak English, that are grieving because their caregivers have died in hospice. For all of the programs and all of the situations that the weak and powerless find themselves in, this community has come together to help. It's not a lot of money. Over the past five years, the program has grown to some extent. It's up sixty-three thousand dollars from last year, which is a fraction. But as a percentage of the entire budget, the ratio has actually gone down about twenty-three percent. It's gone down from point nine percent to point seven percent. So while I commend the taxpayers of the City of Danbury for their generosity, I, I do need to point out that as important as these programs are, they are not, in case we are getting worried that we're now supporting the entire Greater Danbury metro area, Fairfield County, Ridgefield County, they are actually decreasing in terms of the ratio between the amount of funds that are allocated for the entire budget. So I, I would actually like to see, over the next year, some fine tuning of these programs. I think that some of the questions that were raised about doubling admission statements are valid, although communities quite often have more than one service provided. There's certainly more than one dentist in Danbury, more than one doctor, more than one heart specialist, more than one school. So it's entirely appropriate that some of these programs are actually done by several different organizations, with competitions against them. I'd like to take a look at that, perhaps in the future. But I'm comfortable with the money that we're spending here as a percent of the budget, and I am, I am in favor of what we have on this year.
Thank you, very much. Thank you. Counselwoman Seracino?
Thank you. I'd like to address a couple of the things that were said last night at the public hearing. There isn't a single one of these agencies that we have funded that does not receive funding from other places. We are not their sole budget, and I think people need to understand that, that what we give them is only a fraction of what they actually spend during the course of the year. All of these agencies work very hard to get corporate sponsorship, individual donations, state and federal grants. And, and I think they're to be commended for the tremendous work that they do for our community, and, and I'm happy that we're able to support them.
Thank you very much. And before I ask for a vote, I too would like to thank everybody that came out tonight for your being with us. This is a very difficult, you know, time during the budget. I'm hoping that all the, the grant agencies will be pleased with what we try to do. And then the last thing before I ask for the vote is that I, I and this committee and all of us, I'm sure, even in this room, agree that we, it would behoove us to, to, after the budget process is completed sometime maybe around late May, June, or sometime like that, we can take a look, we can take a look at a proposal that came from, from the committee, myself, and others, that we will look at all these different issues and, and hope to realign the, the agencies in, in a little bit more streamlined way so that it will have an easier time for us to identify the, any of the issues, where the expenditures are going, et cetera, et cetera. So again, thank you very much for your participation. And now, at that time, I'm going to ask for a vote on the, on the original. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed at all?
Chairman, we see no further business. The property office committee, I think, I'm going to go to the chairman.
Second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, thirteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-eighth.